Please.
Mayor Stewie.
Present.
Mr. Bernbaum is absent. Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Deportaire?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Notice of the meeting was provided to the Burnsville News Carrier, News Star Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December 29th, 2015. Please all rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Right at this point in the meeting, we'll entertain presentations, and we have one from Community in Crisis by John Malley.
Thank you, Mayor.
Our neighbor from Baskin Ridge.
First of all, thank you very much for giving some time to speak this evening. I appreciate it. I know firsthand experience how busy these meetings can be. I was mayor last year. I was approached at the beginning of the year by some friends of mine who were active in a group called Community in Crisis, which was starting to try to deal with the problem of prescription opiates being misused and leading to heroin use. In the ensuing year and a half or so, it's become a much more widely recognized problem on a national level, the president, on the state level, the governor, and the legislature, and so on. I think we were kind of, our group was sort of at the crest of the wave, but the wave is traveling pretty fast, and we're struggling very hard to catch up. And I'm trying to communicate to the surrounding communities in the Somerset Hills and elsewhere what we're doing in the hopes that we can get some cooperation, and maybe we can help you with the problem as well. Let me give you a little, very short background about Community in Crisis. As I said, in 2014, Concerned Local residents started a grassroots movement to create the group, Community in Crisis, which is a coalition designed to address prescription pill and heroin opiate use in the community through shared resources, education, and support. Comprised of elected officials, the police, EMT, physicians, nurses, parents, therapists, social workers, teachers, religious groups, the YMCA, Somerset County YMCA, we set up a volunteer group that developed an action plan that was based on the findings from New Jersey Governor Chris Christie's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, which is now known as CICADA. They put out a report about two or three years ago. It was an 88-page report, very prescient in terms of what was going to happen and was happening then. It had seven action items, so when we formed our group, we had seven task forces, one to deal with each of those action items. The report revealed that New Jersey was experiencing a dramatic surge in heroin and opiate abuse, particularly among 18- to 25-year-olds, with an accompanying rise in drug overdoses, fatal and other ones. Give you a little personal note, I have a 26-year-old daughter. She regularly texts me news about former classmates, people who are a couple of years ahead of her, behind her, who have overdosed. So here's here. Two years later today, the rest of the country is now aware of this growing epidemic, but is struggling on how best to deal with it. Two weeks ago, I attended one of Freeholder Caliguiers Mayor's roundtables, and it was obvious that the desire to do something was overwhelming, but the scope and urgency of the problem was very daunting. Prescription painkillers are now one of the biggest pathways to heroin addiction. Pills are expensive; heroin is dirt cheap. Single Vicodin, $20; a bag of heroin, $3. Pills are seen by some as safe or acceptable in a way that heroin is not. They don't have the stigma in our society that heroin does. But the cost of obtaining opiate pills like Percocet, Vicodin, Oxycodone eventually drives addicts to heroin, which is cheap, as I said, but the drug varies from dose to dose and often contains lethal additives like Fentanyl, which is actually an anesthetic and suppresses breathing. With all that in mind, Community in Crisis is reaching out to neighboring towns to offer help and to seek your aid in helping us deal with this problem. Let me give you a few things that we've done so far. At our urging, Burnsville Township was one of the first New Jersey communities to supply and to train all of our first responders with Narcan, which, as you may know, is an opioid antagonist which completely or partially reverses the effects of an opiate overdose. In 2015, we instituted a bi-weekly support group for families struggling with a loved one or friend's addiction. We are working with our municipal alliance, the whole local drug and medicine drop-off days for disposing of leftover or expired drugs in the household. This relates to what Mrs. Wade was talking to me about before the meeting, the fact that everybody now has medicine cabinets with lots of leftover pills over prescribed. We have partnered with local realtors to provide in-home medicine lock boxes for safeguarding prescription drugs. I didn't have one to bring in either. About half the size of a shoebox, they've got a combination lock on them. The reason we're working with realtors is because we found out that a lot of people are showing up at open houses, sneaking away, going into the medicine cabinet, or rifling the medicine cabinet for painkillers. We sponsor the medical grand rounds at Marstown Memorial Center, educating physicians on the pills-to-heroin pathway and encouraging safer prescribing habits. Again, talking to Mrs. Wade before the meeting, doctors tend to be set in their ways. Their rated, their performances are rated on pain management. Simplest way to cure patients' pain is with opiates. Trying to get them to change that. We hosted Chris Heron. Now, Chris Heron is a former NBA player, and he's a recovering heroin addict. We did it at the 1,000-seat Ridge Pack. The place was full. We had students, student athletes, and their parents there. He's a compelling speaker. We are lobbying New Jersey lawmakers to encourage physician participation in the physician monitoring program, excuse me, the prescription monitoring program, which is a system to, a database, that everyone, every prescriber, whether they're a pharmacist or a doctor, can add in the prescription, the name of the recipient, and so on, which helps curb prescription shopping by addicts who go to different doctors with the same set of problems and get a prescription from each one. We're also urging the insurance industry to modify and improve its coverage for treatment options. One problem is you can have an overdose, the police come, they administer Narcan, ambulance takes them to the hospital, they recover, they walk out of there without any advice, no social worker talks to them, nothing, and sometimes within days they're back. Sometimes within hours, they're back. So we're trying to lobby the hospitals and the insurance companies to provide options for those people who want to get clean but don't know how. All right, now here's where the pitch comes. On October 26th, we're going to be hosting a leaders forum on this pills-to-heroin epidemic. Hopefully, you've all received your invitations. If you haven't yet, you soon will. This forum is not for the general public. It's aimed at elected officials, police, first responders, and school leaders. What we're going to do is we're going to have a little intro, going to be at the Baskin Ridge Country Club, we're going to have a little intro, and we're going to break out into working groups, elected officials, police, and so on and so on, and try to get input from you as to what, how you perceive the problem, what you think you need to do, problems you would be having trying to deal with it, and see what we can do. In conclusion, I would say that the problem is severe, but we can all do something to help, and we would love to turn Burnsville Township's effort into one that includes all the communities in the Somerset Hills. And there's information on those handouts, www.communityincrisis.org, et cetera, or you can email me directly. If you have questions and you'd like to talk to me, you can reach me at my township email, which is jmalley@burnsville.org, and I will be happy to meet you offline and help out any way I can. And that's all I have, Mayor. If there's any questions or anything, I'll be happy to take them. Otherwise, thank you for your attention.
And John, thank you for coming and sharing this with us. This is very important, very important crisis that we're facing.
It is.
And for the general public, John brought some literature with him, so I encourage everybody to take some.
Okay, and I hope to see at least some of you on the 26th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two other presentations this evening, but they're not listed as presentations, so we'll do them during the open session. All right. Okay, approval of minutes. August 8th, Ms. Sarah Barabram and D. Portea were absent. August 18th, Mr. D. Portea was absent, and September 12th, Mayor Stewie was absent. Any changes to the minutes?
Yeah.
Modifications? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, approval of minutes.
I'm with you.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt.
Second.
Councilman Wade, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained. Oh, that wasn't here.
All right, you can still book that. All right, open session. At this point in the meeting, the mayor and council welcome comments from any member of the public to help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers shall limit their comments to five minutes. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Open session, presentations. What happened? Yeah, okay, come on up. How you doing tonight?
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Daris. I live at 100 Berkeley Circle in Baskin Ridge. I am here to invite everybody to my opening of my new boutique in Burnsville. It's 104 Maybrook Road, and we're called The Pretty Pink Rooster, and I just wanted to put a name to a face and invite everyone today.
Okay, and that's at?
It's Wednesday.
At?
6:30.
6:30, okay.
And is this clothing?
It's jewelry and accessories.
All right, well, this is great. We're glad you're coming to Burnsville to open the business.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
There'll be a ribbon cutting there. I guess you were going to go, Mr. Mayor? We're going to have a ribbon cutting. I'll be there, all the council members, everyone's invited.
I was going to go.
Yes.
Was it David?
I think Mr. D. Portea told me it's 6 o'clock though, so I wouldn't relate.
Want to make sure you get in there and you buy some stuff for the wife.
Everything's under $50, so.
That's even better.
Thank you for your time.
I will, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Ladies?
Yeah.
How you doing?
How are you?
What's the date?
October 29th, but maybe tonight.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, I know.
I'm a little out of practice, so we're going to Burnsville Police here.
No stress from us.
Tara Lynn Vitola, I live at 120 Claremont Road in Burnsville.
And I'm Christine Di Mara, 28 Anderson Hill Road in Burnsville. So we, Tara and I came together and decided to start a driver's safety initiative, and we emailed this to, to the mayor and the council. This is a copy of it. So I'm going to just read the email aloud to you. It says, "Drive Chill Burnsville is a grassroots movement started by the concerned citizens of Burnsville. Our mission is to promote safer streets for our pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. It is our vision that Drive Chill Burnsville will help set the pace for a higher standard of driving, in turn, creating a safer community for all. We believe this will be achieved through our Safe Driving Campaign. We hope to partner with the Burnsville Police Department, the mayor, and town council, as well as with every resident and business owner who cares about road safety in Burnsville as much as we do. We know that this movement will lead to safer streets for all. As you all know, Burnsville is designed for walking and biking. However, pedestrians and cyclists face serious safety issues because of drivers who speed, who are distracted, and who do not stop for pedestrians at crosswalks. These threats are particularly heightened for children and seniors. The Drive Chill Burnsville program is open to all Burnsville area drivers, including residents, students, and township and school district employees. The first step in joining this movement is by taking a pledge. I pledge to drive the speed limit. I pledge to stop for pedestrians in both marked and unmarked crosswalks. I pledge to share the road with pedestrians and cyclists of all ages and abilities, and I will display the Drive Chill Burnsville magnet proudly on my vehicle to encourage others to take the pledge. The magnet will look like this. In order to be able to distribute these magnets to as many residents as possible, we will need to purchase them at a price of approximately $2 per magnet. It is our hope that the borough of Burnsville and/or the Burnsville Police Department can help cover this cost in order to get the program off the ground. If so, we will promptly order the first 250 magnets for those who want them, and we will conduct an organized distribution, not requiring any administrative assistance from the borough or its employees. We anticipate that this is a minimal cost, and that most participants will gladly purchase the magnets for their vehicles. We have already begun to spread our message via social media, Facebook, Instagram, and we plan on inserting this message into the school district Friday folders. So far, the interest and feedback has been extremely positive. Residents are thankful for our efforts and are anxious to join our movement and get their magnet. In fact, many have already pledged to spread the word for more and more members of the borough. We are determined to make our streets safer, and with your help, we can continue the positive momentum and make life here so much better and safer for everyone. We hope you consider joining our movement and join us in our mission for traffic safety."
Christine, I have two thoughts. One of the things that you failed to mention in your Drive Chill is cell phones. Now, I don't go up Anderson Hill Road, but I walk down 202, and the number of particular parents coming out of Church Street on their phone.
The distracted driving.
It's a huge issue. There was a brief reference to distracted driving, but I think somewhere in your PR, you need to point-blank say, "Put the phones down."
Yes, absolutely.
You remember the study we did three years ago, when we actually, we did, he actually complained about people speeding through the school, and we actually found it was the parents themselves that were dropping kids off for schools. We couldn't believe it at first, but we actually put the strips out, and it came right back. And I had some people actually come to me and say, you know, "Yeah, because I'm always late bringing my kids to school." Meanwhile, he was endangering all the other children. So it wasn't quite as comprehensive as, you know, as everybody thought, because, you know, one of the things, and I didn't want to cut you off, you can finish your thought, and I was going to, I mean, if you indulge me, one of the biggest things that I see right now is we don't look at the other side where it's a shared responsibility. I know that we have these sheets out. I don't know if you have a chance, I'll take a few of them out, but what we're, what we're finding is a lot of the kids with iPhones and the, you know, the earbuds in, and people crossing the street on their bikes, which is illegal. You're supposed to walk them in the crosswalks. Tell me if I'm wrong or not.
I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, well, I've been checking on that stuff.
Correct.
Because down in Princeton, I had a few people, we actually arrested quite a few people because they just go across and they don't look.
They have that tunnel vision.
And one of the things too is a lot of people don't realize, what's the braking distance at 25 miles an hour for a car in the middle of town? It's 50 feet. I know this for, and you know what it is for a truck? 147 feet, which is almost half a football field. So people just go out and think that car's going to stop, and they don't even give the car a chance. The shared responsibility is to make sure you look that driver in the eye, and he's paying attention, he's not a coffee in his hand or texting or something. And what I did was, I made a whole bunch of things almost two years ago. I did a big research on it with Rutgers and everything else, you can take these too. Try to page through them, but it's from the Attorney General and everyone else going on. We have to teach our kids that that car doesn't stop right away. And I see, you know, people going and letting kids out in front of the movie theater instead of going to the let-off places in front of the Burnsville, you know, the Burners Inn. So is there a way we can get it involved with, you know, the school? Because I think with those stands out there, it gives people this false sense of security that, "I can walk out there, car's going to stop right away, everything's good." That's not the case. And then when it's dark out, those stopping distances increase almost exponentially. And when it's raining, even more so. And when they're, you know, wearing dark clothes. I always go through town, you know, lately, just like 20 miles an hour, because you just don't know. People just walk out. They walk between the cars going across, and I can't blame some of the drivers, because some of them, they don't even have a chance.
Well, what we are noticing, she lives on Claremont, I live on Anderson Hill Road, is that the 25 mile an hour, if people were actually going that, you know, that speed or lower, it wouldn't be as bad, but the, even if it's just 30, 35, and I agree with you on that it's not only people from out of town. And that's why I think the visual reminder of the car in front of you, when you start tailgating them, and then you realize, "Oh, my gosh, you know, if this is a 25." Like, sometimes you're too busy thinking about where you're late to go to, and you're not, right?
It's situational awareness, we call it. You have to know, you know, they sit there on the phone, I mean, people are getting robbed and stuff with their phones and everything too, because they're sitting there like this, all of a sudden some snatches, and they're gone, because they don't know what's going on. Is there any way we can get into the grammar school, into the high school?
Well, that's the, that's where, like, we're looking to take this. When I contacted Christine, something that really triggered me was I was running down Anderson Hill with my bow to shoulder, and I'm pregnant, I have my son, and then at the crosswalk where a senior, what's his name, senior, a woman in a van was coming down senior towards safety, and she was going to let me go. So I went to go on the crosswalk, and some woman came barreling up the hill on my side, started drifting to the crosswalk, and I was like a deer in headlights, I didn't know what to do, jumped the curb, almost hit me, and her excuse was, "No, sorry, I'm so late, and my son just keeps texting me, I'm really, you know, I'm really late, I have to get him dinner." And I'm like, "Okay, that's fine, but you almost killed me."
That's when you should have taken a plate, right, right there.
I think I was so stunned, and I was just so, like, in shock.
I understand.
And I grew up in New York, so I grew up with, like, traffic, and I lived in Western Europe, so, I mean, I'm used to being on my feet and walking. I walked to the grocery store, but it's unbelievable. A cousin of mine is NYPD, and he came over to my house, and he had one of those radar guns, and he kind of stand there, and I don't know if this was legal, so I probably shouldn't say it, but I sat outside, and I did, and I was clocking.
For you, it's fine.
I won't say his name, right, I won't say his name. And I sat there, and I, in my driveway, I'm clocking people, and you're right, it's bed of stickers on all the cars. Someone, a woman in a black UConn comes down at least three times a day, barreling down, and that day, I swear, 50, 58, and 62 on Claremont Road in front of the tavern. And that is in downhill tunnel vision with kid in the front seat of a car and a big fat red V sticker up on the back.
And with a large vehicle like that, your braking distance, like, makes you...
Even more so.
And it's really scary, and I just feel like, you know, I know that right now the magnet, it's, it's a kind of a small picture, but I just feel like if we can get, like, the pace, and set the pace, and have parents on board, and have, go into the high school and teach the kids about the reaction time and the braking time, and also have distracted driving, distracted walking, just think all around, it would be safer.
And defensive driving, like you mentioned, tailgating.
Yes.
Many times, the vehicle in front will get struck from behind and gets impelled into somebody or another vehicle or something.
You know, things that come out from schools that they don't have at kids' age, where there are plenty of people that will say that they stop smoking because their kids were so much, things like that.
And seat belts, too.
Yeah.
That took a long time.
Schools could offer some information, just some of the stats, about how long it takes to stop, things like that, help kids learn, and I'm sure that would also help. It's a very good cause, and sometimes I'd even take it down a list.
Yeah, and, you know, and the other thing too, and this is just a suggestion, I don't even know if this goes with this, but I know in the city, sometimes I'd put, like, a distracted driving kill sign. Maybe that's a little bit too vulgar to have in town, but then, like, a wrecked car. And I just think that maybe it's important, once a month, by the train station to have, like, a visual. I mean, I don't know, I grew up with PSEs. I mean, even living in Hudson County for a little bit, because of the train station, we'd have to watch New Jersey Transit PSEs in school and see what could happen if you play on the train track. So I think rather than, you know, you can talk all about positivity, and this town is great, but you can't put a positive blanket on a problem and pretend like it's not there. So.
One other thing, particularly the high school kids, we have a lot of crosswalks, and so people are sort of paying attention to crosswalks when the high school kids get out, and they never put a crosswalk.
And we spend a lot of money on police and everybody, and the crossing attendants, and we go to all the major areas, and they're still not using them. So sometimes you got to be careful about, you know, we have lots of signs, it's like that lady that comes down doing 58 and everything else.
Yeah.
Did she happen to look at the speed limit sign? How did that work for us? You know?
Well, like, our thinking is, like, so maybe she'll get behind someone who's going 25, and something will trigger in her brain.
That's a good thing.
I was going 30 down Meeker last week, and somebody, 10 yards, I swear to God, I wasn't, but 10 yards coming down Meeker, and someone went around me. I was like, "Whoa."
It happens, yeah, throughout the day.
That's like, oddly.
Can you show me the P. Car program?
So the P. Car program is kind of what we think, as citizens, we obviously can't be clocking people and giving tickets, but as citizens, we can try to get the word out one by one, mom to mom, dad to dad, and just, you know, hopefully the movement will grow enough that everybody's...
You don't want to get pulled over with a Drive Chill sticker on your car, because that's just...
You know, we hope that it's more, it means more to people than just, "I have this sticker on my car." You know, that's it. You know, it's a commitment.
I mean, if you could expand, because, I mean, these kids, they have to look out for themselves, though. I mean, it says here, they even recommend, "Children under 10 should be out with their parents, they should be crossed with their parents."
Absolutely.
Says it right here, Department of, everything. I mean, take a quick look at it, you'll see all the stuff distracted, all the stats are in that sheet.
Well, I'm with the kids when people aren't stopping. It's not like they're...
Oh, I'm not, I'm not making any accusations, I see a lot of young kids, but that's how they're taught also.
Oh, yeah, it starts at home.
You know, because there was one time I was coming out from the pub and grub with my kids, just for example, and my, I was, I was right there at the crosswalk, I was looking, my son just goes out. I grabbed him, that person couldn't stop, didn't even have a chance. Police officer pulled him over, I know who the police officer is. I chastised my son, and then I walked over to the police officer, I said, "Please do not give him a ticket, because it was my son's fault."
Right.
And thank God he didn't, but it's because he just didn't know. He thought that, "Hey, you're there, you're ready to go, everybody's going to stop for him." And he was young at the time. Now I couldn't stop, and he's like 267 now. So it's a big difference.
My kids say that all the time, but they're supposed to stop for us, and I say, "Well, this is supposed to stop."
It's supposed to, you have to know, I mean, 60 feet, it's not from there to that wall, it's twice that, it's twice that to the wall. That car should be over there at 25 miles an hour through town. Yeah, that's why you have to sit there, and you have to look and make sure he sees you, and you see him start to slow down, and you see the nose of the car come down.
It's a false sense of security for those kids. They need to be taught in school that they have to stop and look all the way, make sure the car stops.
It says, "Left, right, and then left again."
But isn't it taught, like, in school, I guess, in the city?
Apparently it isn't. Apparently, but that's what I'm saying, this could help.
Have you actually talked to the school board?
Have we?
No.
Attorney General and everyone else going on, we have to teach our kids that that car doesn't stop right away. And I see, you know, people going in and letting kids out in front of the movie theater instead of going to the let-off places in front of the burners, you know, the burners inn. So is there a way we can get it involved with, you know, the school? Because I think with those stands out there, it gives people this false sense of security that I can walk out there, car's gonna stop right away, everything's good. That's not the case. And then when it's dark out, those stopping distance increase almost exponentially. And when it's raining, even more so. And when they're, you know, wearing dark clothes. I always go through town, you know, lately, just like twenty miles an hour because you just don't know. People just walk out. They walk between the cars going across. And I can't blame some of the drivers because some of them, they don't even have a chance.
Well, what we are noticing, um, she lives on Clermont, I live on Anderson Hill Road, is that the twenty-five mile an hour, if people were actually going that's, you know, that speed or lower, it wouldn't be as bad. But the third, even if it's just thirty, thirty-five, and I agree with you on that, it's not only people from out of town. And that's why I think the visual reminder of the car in front of you, when you start tailgating them, and then you realize, oh my gosh, you know, if this is a twenty-five. Like, sometimes you're too busy thinking about where you're late to go to, and you're not...
You're almost like mag?
Right.
It's situational awareness, we call it. You have to know, you know, they sit there on the phone, I mean, people are getting robbed and stuff with their phones and everything too, because they're sitting there like this, all of a sudden some snatches and they're gone. Because they don't know what's going on. Is there any way we can get into the grammar school and to the high school?
Well, that's the, that's where, like, we're looking to take this. I, when I contacted Christine, something that really triggered me was I was running down Anderson Hill with my bow to shoulder, and I'm pregnant, I have my son, and then at the crosswalk where a scene, does that say, teeny, teeny is, a woman in a van was coming down Seamy towards Seamy's, and she was gonna let me go. So I went to go on the crosswalk, and some woman came barreling up the hill on my side, started drifting to the crosswalk, and I was like a deer in headlights, I didn't know what to do, jumped the curb, almost hit me, and her excuse was, no sorry, I'm so late, and my son just keeps texting me, I'm real, you know, I'm really late, I have to get him dinner. And I'm like, okay, that's fine, but you almost killed me.
That's when you should've taken a plate, right, right there.
I think I was so stunned, and I was just so like in shock. And I grew up in New York, so I grew up with like traffic, and I lived in Western Europe. So, I mean, I'm used to being on my feet and, and walking, I walked to the grocery store, but it's unbelievable. Um, a cousin of mine is NYPD, and he came over to my house, and he had one of those radar bombs, you kind of stand there, and I don't know if this was legal, so I probably shouldn't say it, but I sat outside, and I did, and I was blocking.
For you, it's fine.
Just don't say it's me.
I won't say his name, I won't say his name. And, and I sat there, and I, in my driveway, I'm blocking people. And, and you're right, it's bed of stickers on all the cars. Someone, a woman in a black Utah, Yukon comes down, at least three times a day, barreling down, and that day, I swear, fifty, fifty-eight, and sixty-two, on Clermont Road in front of the tavern. And that is in downhill tunnel vision, with kid in the front seat of a car, and a big fat red B sticker up on the back.
And with a large vehicle like that, your braking distance like makes you...
Even more so.
And it's really scary, and I just feel like, you know, I didn't, I know that right now the magnet, it's, it's a kind of a small picture. But I just feel like if we can get, get like the pace, and set the pace, and have parents on board, and have, go into the high school and teach the kids about the reaction time and the braking time, and also have distracted driving, distracted walking, just think all around, it would be safer.
And defensive driving, like you mentioned, tailgating.
Yes.
Many times, the vehicle in front will get struck from behind and gets impelled into somebody or another vehicle or something.
You know, um, things that come out from schools that they don't have at kids' age, um, for the plenty of people who have the right, that they stop smoking because their kids' weight is so much, and things like that.
And seat belts too.
Yeah.
And it took a long time.
Schools could offer page some information, just some of the stacks, about how long it takes to stop, and things like that, help kids learn, and I'm sure that would also help. It's a very good cause, and, um, sometimes I'd even take it down a list, like, you know, just...
Yeah, and, you know, and the other thing too, and this is just a suggestion, I don't even know if this goes with this, but I know in the city, sometimes I put like a distracted driving kill sign, maybe that's a little bit too vulgar to have in town, but then like a wrecked car. And I just think that maybe it's important once a month by the train station to have like a visual. I, I mean, I don't know, I grew up with PSEs. I mean, even living in Hudson County for a little bit, because of the train station, we'd have to watch New Jersey Transit PSEs in school, and see what could happen if you play on the train track. So I think rather than, you know, you can talk all about positivity, and this town is great, but you can't put a positive blanket on a problem and pretend like it's not there.
Right.
So...
One other thing, and particularly the high school kids, we have a lot of crosswalks. And so people are sort of paying attention to crosswalks when the high school kids get out, and they never put a crosswalk.
And we spend a lot of money on police and everybody, and the crossing attendants, and we go to all the major areas, and they're still not using them. So sometimes you gotta be careful about, you know, we have lots of signs, it's like that lady that comes down doing fifty-eight and everything else.
Yeah.
Did she happen to look at the speed limit sign? How did that work for us? You know?
Well, like, we're, like, our thinking is like, so maybe she'll get behind someone who's going twenty-five, and something will trigger in her brain.
That's good.
I was going thirty down Meeker last week, and somebody, ten yards, I swear to God, I wasn't but ten yards coming down Meeker, and someone went around me. I was like, whoa.
It happens, yeah, throughout the day.
That's like on a...
Not late.
Can you show me the P's car?
So the P's car program is kind of what we think, as citizens, we obviously can't be clocking people and giving tickets, but as citizens, we can try to get the word out one by one, mom to mom, dad to dad, and just, you know, hopefully the movement will grow enough that everybody's...
You don't want to get pulled over with a drive chill sticker on your car, because that's just...
You know, we hope that it's more, it means more to people than just, I have this sticker on my car, and that's it. You know, that it's a commitment, it's...
I mean, if you could expand, because, I mean, these kids, they have to look out for themselves though. I mean, it says here, they even recommend, children under ten should be out with their parents, they should be crossed with their parents. Says it right here, Department of Everything. I mean, take a quick look at it, you'll see all the stuff distracted, all the stats are in that sheet.
Well, I'm with the kids when people aren't stopping, it's not like they're...
Oh, I'm not, I'm not making any accusations, I see a lot of young kids, but that's how they're taught also.
Oh, yeah, it starts at home.
You know, because there was one time I was coming out from the pub and grub with my kids, just for example, and my, I was, I was right there at the crosswalk, I was looking, my son just goes out. I grabbed him, that person couldn't stop, didn't even have a chance. Police officer pulled him over, I know who the police officer is. I, I chastised my son, and then I walked over to police officer, I said, please do not give him a ticket because it was my son's fault.
Right.
And thank God he didn't, but it's because he just didn't know. He thought that, hey, you're there, you're ready to go, everybody's gonna stop for him. And he was young at the time. Now I couldn't stop, and he's like two sixty-seven now. So, it's a big difference.
My kids say that all the time, but they're supposed to stop for us, and I say, well, this is supposed to stop.
It's supposed to, you have to know, I mean, sixty feet, it's not from there to that wall, it's twice that, it's twice that to the wall. That car should be over there at twenty-five miles an hour through town. Yeah, that's why you have to sit there and you have to look and make sure he sees you, and you see him start to slow down, and you see the nose of the car come down.
It's a false sense of security for those kids, they need to be taught in school that they have to stop and look all things, make sure that car stops.
But isn't it taught like in school, I guess, in the state of New York?
Apparently it isn't. Apparently, but that's what I'm saying, this could help.
Have you actually talked to the school board?
Have we?
No.
Oh, no.
Why don't you part with one of the folks on the school board?
Yes, I've been up to do that, and I, I, we also talked about, um, bringing back a committee that was, uh, the borough and the school board used to have, like a committee.
Is there like a traffic safety?
That's what, that's what brought the traffic study at the school, and then we said, okay, we'll put some tables out there to try to help it, but we found out that it was the actual parents that were causing the problem.
I disagree.
And that is two permanent tables there, up in the Polo Grounds.
But there's a lot of good websites here, Kids Safe Worldwide.
Yeah.
It gives you all the statistics, what's going on, there's a Rutgers study in there.
And right in the state, Division of Highway and Traffic Safety, they have a lot of stuff you could print out and hand out for educational purposes. But us as a municipality, you apply for pedestrian safety grant and initiatives, and it combines an enforcement component, an educational component, and with the educational component, they usually give you money to purchase commodities.
Gotcha.
So when you're teaching the kids, you could have a flexible fire, Frisbee, you give them after the program, or mini basketball or football that says Walk Safe.
And definitely know, I would love to be part of something like that, and there's a few other parents on my street in Clermont Road that would like to be part of that.
That's great, yes.
So if there's any way to get literature to bring that board back, or like a committee back, I would love to be part of that.
That sounds great. Great ideas, thank you. Council members, Mike, good, very good.
You could do it again, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so check out the websites. Mike mentioned Division of Highway and Traffic Safety.
Okay, good. More of these after us?
Absolutely, if you want more, I have more. I did a lot of studying on it.
Lieutenant Gordon, you have anything? I know Christine, you met with the Chief of Police also.
Yeah, I talked with Chief Valentine today, he wants to meet with you, if you can reach out to him, and make him board you, and I did some looking around, and there are some pretty good programs that you're talking about that are already, already in place, like the town of Bramford has one. So it's not like you have to reinvent anything, they have the pledges, they have...
There might be grant opportunities too.
They have companies that even have magnets that say, keep kids alive, drive twenty-five, so it's all embedded, if you just have to go out and get it and implement it.
Thank you very much.
Well, ladies, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the open session? Council members, anything else before we leave open session? All right, seeing no one further, I'll close the open session, move to ordinances. We have no ordinances on the agenda this evening. Item number eight is resolutions. We have resolution sixteen-one seventy-one to sixteen-one eighty.
Any conversation, questions? Can I pull sixteen-one seventy-seven, just for a quick question?
Sure. Anyone else?
Yes, I also have a question.
You got one?
No, same thing on sixteen-seven.
All right, um...
And it's really just a quick question.
Sixteen-one seventy-seven, go ahead.
Uh, to start, John, I saw, I mean, it's very comprehensive, no problem. Do you feel confident that they'll respond to you, or should we put someone as like in a batter's box in case something bad happened throughout the state and you couldn't get somebody, you had somebody that you could pick as a second?
There's someone already in the batter's box.
Okay, answer, thank you.
And another thing that came up after this bid was awarded, um, we have experience with the low bidder as a different entity, they worked out okay. However, the concern, the company's an happensack, an emergency response, emergency trees within twenty-four hours, can expect them to drop what they're doing. Um, we will keep an eye on them at the bid opening. I asked them if he was gonna be able to respond promptly, of course, the answer was yes. Um, we didn't have it in this bid, we may want to consider, uh, putting the radius, you know, you must be within X miles of Burnersville in order to even bid on this.
Well, if he can service you, that's fine. And if he doesn't, I think you should have, you know, the opportunity to say, okay, let's bring in the, you know, the pinch hitter.
And we will do that. If he doesn't respond, just because of the nature of the, of the bid, the person's been doing it for a while, and will be in the, in the bullpen ready to go.
Great.
And this, this is not planned work, this is purely emergency unforeseen?
Correct. Or, um, hey, you know, we want to, we want to take down this tree, contracts in place, call them up, schedule it.
So it's scheduled, I don't understand.
Yes.
Okay, and then...
It's primary for emerg, primarily for emergency, but, uh, we also put in a bid for non-emergency as well.
And then they have to hear their plate cards?
For, for, for emergency.
And did you have to know if they have any, um, you know, some of these companies, are they gonna have to have other depots or facilities?
This person is only, uh, we asked for a bucket truck, two man crew, and a chipper. That's a standard, or most people are able to do the work. If it gets, of course, if it's a monster tree, you know, most people have access to cranes.
Yeah.
John, I have a quick question, there's a tree behind the tennis courts that put the Polo Grounds, it was taken on, huge tree. Who took that down? The town?
Last year's bidder. And I'm getting it, I'm getting a price for him, I asked him to take that down, that tree was dead or than dead, it came down, I was gonna take out the fence and your tennis courts and everything else. I'm awaiting a price from him right now to remove, um, the debris, and to also, and also get a price to take down the one next to it, that is also crowding.
Okay, so it was our responsibility, the town's not the school? That's the town property, okay.
Anyone else?
And four bidders, so, you know, they didn't pay the Burnersville community for this. No, not at all.
I've been studying it since I got started.
All right, so, uh, you have a motion?
I'll need a motion and move, um, sixteen-one seventy-one through sixteen-one eighty.
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Deportaire?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Youngblood, roll call please.
Mr. Burnham?
Yes.
Mr. Billyo?
Yes.
For Deportaire?
Yes.
Wait, yes?
Yes.
Still waiting for a tie, guys, I need to vote. All right, number nine, we reported a minute, we reported a minute...
Be careful what you wish to say.
Yes, reported a minute, this full attorney, anyone have any questions for Jack? All right. Um, council committee reports, public safety.
Uh, we have not met in the last couple of weeks, I think there's some things on the agenda that we need to get together. Obviously, I know the chief has been working on the roads and speeding and, you know, problems with detours. Never any problems with detours.
Anything else, John? Anything? All right, like John Gordon, not McCall. All right, um, ten B, finance and personnel.
We had some meetings, Ralph is reporting on various items, uh, as they come up, of some of our literature to close session.
Some we already voted on.
Some we already voted on, and we did report that, um, our budget's in good shape. And, uh, there's...
All right, that's it, any questions? All right. Ten C, engineering, technology, and public works.
We have not had a meeting in a while, so John, can you provide an update for us?
Yeah, a couple highlights, uh, we, we do have a pre-construction meeting next Wednesday, I believe it is, the fifth of October for the Mullins Lane sidewalk extension, finally getting the contractor in to get that underway. On Meeker Road, I think you got a copy of the letter that Ferraro Engineering sent to the DOT, um, trying to get a, an emergency, an approval for that work to proceed as soon as Route 202 was open. New Jersey Transit weighed in on that, you saw the pictures, so hopefully that'll wake someone up in Trenton that, you know, we really need to get this job taken care of. My concern is that with the curbs installed, we've got an irregular road surface, Meeker Road's probably one of the steepest roads that we have, and it'll not be fun in winter trying to plow and, and keep that road safe if we're not able to complete the project. So hopefully, we'll be back from Trenton soon.
Is there a follow-up process for Trenton?
Well, that, that just went to, it was last meeting, so it hasn't, it hasn't been long, uh, we will absolutely follow, we'll, we'll talk to our local laypeople, just a little bit more.
What's the date they're starting Mullins, did you say?
Uh, we have a pre-construction meeting next week, from there we'll find out what the contractor's schedule is, but the trees can come down, uh, I would assume it could, it could move pretty soon, you know, hopefully we would get it done before the, certainly before the end of the year.
Okay.
I don't know, we saw the, the big crane, we have rooftop units at the library, uh, they are hooked up, uh, tomorrow the engineer's going out to, uh, mechanical engineer to do an inspection of the work, there's still some balancing, there's still new controls that haven't been installed, and I believe that's taking place this week as well, so by the end of the week, uh, certainly by the end of next week, that project should be wrapped up. Doug did a really good job coordinating with the library, I think it was a pretty seamless operation.
Yeah, I don't know if you were at the meeting, last meeting, but the library staff is just amazed how, um, how quiet and calm, and I know this rush is a very fine...
Yeah, great, great. Hopefully we start saving money soon.
Yeah.
Uh, the Clermont steps, I don't know if you noticed, uh, over there also, the, the old treads and mortar have been removed, uh, we, we went up there with, uh, this contractor we've been working with, has been giving us some pretty good advice, we exposed a couple of the steps, the concrete looked pretty sound, um, so we hired him to remove all of the, uh, the treads. The concrete looks good, um, as he pointed out, it would be, uh, that they are structurally sound, if we tried to cut them out to get the perfect steps going up, we're, we're basically, you know, doing harm to, to the structure of the steps, we're gonna have side walls, and you could cut it, you could dowel it in and pour concrete, but, um, the concrete looks good that we can work with. And the reason that's important is if the engineer's comfortable, that we can provide a, uh, a, a safe, uh, safe steps that aren't gonna be a tripping hazard because of differently, the differences in tread height, that, uh, there's a substantial savings that could be realized. Um, right now we're working with, um, we did have a couple surprises, you go up eight steps, and then there's a, a two tread wide or about a two-foot landing, and another ten steps and a two-foot landing. Um, we, we didn't anticipate that with the rubble that was there. So he's looking at that, working around, around how we get ADA compliant handrails going down through those areas. So a little, a little bit more work, but we think it was a very, uh, productive, uh, work effort from a cost standpoint, so we'll be back to you hopefully very soon, and we can get this out to bid and, uh, and get rolling with the other repairs of these steps.
So John, will we remove those current ran, uh, handrails and put...
Those handrails are non-compliant.
Right.
Um, we have to put two handrails at the proper heights going down the side.
The side or in the center?
We have to, that, we have to have it on either side.
Side, okay.
Um, that, with that, with those going in, it's gonna look kinda silly having the ones on the interior and then the two that are existing right there. We may keep it up top, um, part more as a safety thing than as a real, really functional railing because of the drop loss from, from that upper wing.
Is, uh, isn't there some exemption for sort of like renovation that...
Yes, there is, that's exactly the way that we're looking at it. Again, if we can get, uh, we may need to do some averaging on the, on the tread heights. The, the upper treads may be a little bit taller than the lower ones, not by much, um, again, the engineer, he, he feels comfortable that it's safe, but he's very conservative that way, um, and we're hopeful that, uh, we will be able to work with the existing superstructure.
How does it work with the railing and the other...
Uh, I, I don't know that we could go that far with the railing.
I mean, it may have to be documented start, uh, I did work on a product once, the railing staircase, you know, was really low, because the people were sure it was nice, and that was not an issue as far as, um, the signal wasn't related.
I, I think that would be a, a real stretch in this case, um, because I know those rails have been put in within the thirty years that I've been here, so I don't know that that would, although I feel historic some, you know, some days, um, I don't think that's gonna pass muster from a historic standpoint. Uh, but, but he will, he's looking into all those types of things.
And he's, he's looking at the, um, the facility of the, of the East and South Creek?
Yes.
And wall return up top?
Yeah. And then the wall repair also. The, um, county's soils people were up at the Polo Grounds today, um, the, the notes indicate the borings will take place the week of, uh, nine twenty-six, they took place today. Nothing out of the ordinary, um, they're, they're down about five feet, uh, topsoil with, uh, sandy clay material, nothing out of the ordinary, no odor, but we'll wait to see, um, how they are, how they test and what the county comes back with.
Now, John, what's our return on, on this? When, when we get to hear from them? Is it gonna be a week or...
It's at least a week to get the test back.
It's at least a week, I would imagine, within a week or two, we should hear back on that.
Okay.
There's a very generous sampling, so we get a very good idea of what our, uh, the composure of the, the soils is.
Okay.
John, we're six tomorrow? Six o'clock tomorrow?
No, it's gonna be next week.
One more?
One more.
Yeah, next.
Can we have any word on two doors?
Six-thirty.
Last thing, I thought they said the middle of October, and they're gonna get into it, and they were gonna do long days to, you know, expedite it, that's the last thing I heard.
We got that, but that was a couple weeks ago.
We are talking about the state.
Yeah, it's definitely in the plan. I, I spoke to the project manager, probably four weeks ago, and, you know, that was, they definitely would be headed. They talked about alternatives, getting like a free cash, but, but kind of free cash was very weird, and it would've been seven weeks, so we just started working.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I jumped past one other item, Ralph just reminded me, uh, we've been having meetings with Ralph, myself, Doug, and Brian Bosenberg, and Bob Riley with the improvements to Borough Hall. It's a challenge with the, the desire to put a sidewalk around the front, so people leaving at night, uh, can you actually have a safe place, or anybody coming in for that matter, has a safe way to get between our parking lot and the front door. We've had a couple of meetings, we're within a week, I believe, of, uh, having the final set of plans that we'll bring to the council for your consideration, but run it by Public Works first, um, but we're very close, and I think we'd be pleased with, hopefully not with... We scheduled to have Bob Riley and Brian Bosenberg here for you on the eleventh, the next meeting, next council meeting, make the presentations. Thank you.
Okay. Any other committee reports?
Yeah, just briefly, uh, Open Space, uh, the planning board, um, had the plan and had some comments the other night, they were expecting something, um, for the whole recreation element, and after some back and forth, they, they recognized that, um, that recreation element is not a required component, although they were hoping that it would be more robust. It was changed and revised, um, based on the previous feedback, and then after some discussion, with the attorney and also a consultant, um, you know, they recognized that, uh, they, they're looking for a couple of things to be tweaked in that, and, uh, there will be a meeting with REC and Open Space shortly to see what else can be brought in from the REC's perspective, um, and that'll be amended quickly so that the, they will, the planning board will have it by the end of October probably for, um, for passing, you know, qualify us and get us into the rounds for, um, the higher levels of Open Space funding going forward. Uh, the other thing, uh, I'd be advised a little bit is, uh, the entrance and the, the visual, uh, uh, component of approaching the town on the southwest on two oh two, that would want, that could be a little bit more robust as well, and that's being handled, that's the problem on that one.
What, really, more size, or...
No, just that, um, it, it didn't talk about the importance to the town and having, you know, it's, it's a major statement for most people, they, they think of Burnsville coming up that way, because there's a lot of, you know, um, there's less development, there's very few houses, it's a lot of the open fields, and, you know, a lot of forested area, you know, it's a very rural kind of, uh, pristine look, and they just stuck with that, but it did, I think, to have it better back than that in the, in the Open Space program. And since this whole plan really guides things that the Open Space Committee be looking at in terms of, you know, acquisitions or, um, preservation and things like that, it, it makes sense to have it, you know, really steamy, probably be there. Uh, and then also, um, trails, which are sewer-related, um, we kind of came through, uh, Open Space as well, so I know, especially John had, um, our engineering firm, and he was there, and we met with, like, Anderson for a month, because, um, this wonderful thing for the twenty-two thousand plus grant that we got, um, we have to do, uh, applications to DDP. So it was investigative to find out where we're crossing, um, so the engineers could engineers can have, you know, a better idea of how much to involve and what the bills are gonna be and so on and so forth. But, John, the conclusion was if they wanna have a, sort of a, a pre-meeting with D E P to find out how much they, you know, want to really have done for this. So Doug would, yeah, that's what we agreed to. Okay, so that, uh, hopefully we'll, we, they will leave the D E P on our behalf because, uh, you know, it could be anywhere from fifteen to twenty-plus thousand dollars for this, um, uh, investigations and permits to process payment for this, uh, connection to D E P. So, so hopefully, you know, we'll have a positive meeting with the D E P and, uh, we'll have a little less interest in, uh, commercial establishment and, uh, trucks and cars and motorbikes and, you know, that's, which is important. So we'll find out. It's John, I found it done very quickly because, uh, we do have some time, time pressures, uh, in terms of, you know, the grants.
Is there any way they can waive the permit fees? So it doesn't take away all your grant money?
You know, I don't know if they're allowed to do that statute, but, you know.
I see a shaking head by.
It's a little, right?
So they grant your money to pay their fees. That's awesome.
And, and my question is.
That doesn't sound like the government of hard work.
The E P's, I believe, still self-funding agency.
The Killers Foundation.
Self-funding agency.
And that's how they funded themselves. Great.
So, uh, anyway, but it is, you know, it involves two counties and involves Autobahn and, you know, really the minor parts and it's a lot of public good and all of this. So, uh, a good day down there.
All right. Anything else? Anyone? All right. Um, Corus, um, items of business, eleven A. I skipped the whole section.
Slip a German in there, you would even know.
Fire company requests to use, um, pond grounds for haunted, um, firehouse. And this has been done every year. They provide us with a hold harmless, so, um, I don't see any problem with it.
Hold on.
I'll tell the proper paper.
Favor.
I have.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. All right, eleven B, library parking lot. We have correspondence in here and.
I thought Doug was gonna come on this.
Yeah.
Because what problem I had with the proposal is it doesn't really deal with non-library patrons. I mean, first of all, all those doctor's offices on Clermont, they use those first, um, steps, sorry, parking spots along the southeast side of the library. So that's where we're gonna put, uh, library employees. But more importantly, if people want a spot to park in town, if they wanna run to, you know, anywhere on, um, you know, center town, the intention is as long as they're abide, I thought, as long as they were abiding by the four hour parking limit, they can park in the libraries. And yet that was not dealt with in, um, Doug's memo.
I agree. I think we need Doug.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we also have a request from the school also.
And we have this question at school, which I think we're gonna discuss in private. Question, where are we doing?
Jack, we, you notice in private?
We could do questions contract.
Well, we're gonna need Doug.
Yes, uh, well, everything with the library parking lot, we can't make any decisions because we don't know where we're going. We don't. All right, so we'll put that on for next meeting, Anthony.
Can we make sure that Doug comes?
I don't think Doug will be here. He's got, uh, vacation coming up, so he'll need to go to a public meeting in October.
Second one. Second one, John? We're just, we're holding the school off.
Yeah, I mean, that's a problem. If we're at, um, talking about use of the lower half of the B, I mean, a lot of this is contingent on the lower half of the, uh, or low floor of the library.
I think he could make the decision with respect to the school's request and then just have Doug, we can figure things. You know, I think we're about spots, that's the question. You know, and I looked at it. Uh, it doesn't seem like he has all the church to, entrance spots accounted for.
Well, it would be nice to have a picture.
Could he, could he at least just do a?
Have a plan.
Yeah, could he just do a highlighted thing, get it to us and we can vote right on that? I mean, we don't have, I don't think we need to have him here. And then we, at least we know what we're voting on. Yeah.
Could we, for maybe fifty bucks, do, I mean, they've already got a lottery system, I believe, Melanie, you said, for the students. I mean, it's probably unlikely if, you know, the lower half of the library is, you know, people move in there, that that would happen before. When is this, when are they switching?
They have half the, half the year. So my son has up until the second semester. They do fall and spring.
Right.
So instead of having it all senior year, he only has a half a senior year. When Mary was in school, she had her space the entire year.
But, so that, is that, uh, January one, for instance, or is that January fifteenth? Like what?
Uh, uh, it's probably after Christmas, I would think. Yeah, because September, October, November, December, January. Yeah.
Bob would know, right?
It's in January.
January.
But, but the thinking of changing that policy.
Changing the half-year thing?
No. How, how the lottery is going on, there was complaints, so we're examining the, the, the way you could enter the lottery. We, we have actually made, because there's people who live too close to the school who got spots and some give us lines. And there are families with triplets and twins who got all the spaces.
So they drive three cars to school?
That's a question I don't know.
Unintended consequences. I think that's what it is.
They won the lottery.
Yeah, they won the lottery.
People have expressed. That's stacking the depth. Classic definition. Well, to Janet's point, I mean, if we kick this down the road much further, we're already halfway through. And if we have a tenant that walks in tomorrow, they're not taking possession for forty-five to sixty days.
Well, we, we have, we have a tenant.
Yes, we do.
Right.
And we're starting moving there now.
Well, will we be moving in the space? Halfway moving in the space?
We're starting now.
We're already moving, but we're already proceeding. We think to ten vehicles also.
All right, so then we don't have the space?
And that doesn't, yeah, and that doesn't take into account the people that are coming for permits and such. I think we have to have Doug confer with John, make sure everything's covered first. And then if there's something there, you can just highlight a plan, hey, this is what we could do and come next meeting. That's all. He doesn't have to come to say, this is all we got.
But we have to park the space, people using, the, they use the library and people that rent.
Do I, do I understand that you're trying to figure out? We were trying to get up the spaces now. With the current lottery, seventeen people who wanted to park on campus could.
Right.
So now they have to park on Alcott Avenue, which is not bad right now, but as we march through the square.
It gets worse.
Yeah, more and more people get licenses.
That's why my son can't park in the parking lot anymore, so he's gonna have to get up at six o'clock in the morning to get space on Alcott.
Wait a second. He didn't walk so long.
Good point. And it's healthy too.
I said he'd walk from that. I mean, my kids used to walk that far to school.
Are you John?
They used to walk around.
Uplows, in the snow, both ways.
Like some hour spots for people going into the construction office?
Plus we talked about opening up spots on Alcott.
Yes.
Not accounted for now.
Right. Clearly, we're not making, we, we, we don't have enough to make.
Yeah, we don't have enough to make a decision this evening, so.
We need Doug.
All right, Bob, one other thing.
Point us in the right direction.
Was the Board of Ed interested in a link to our website?
Are we interested in?
A link to the website, the school district.
We certainly, I mean, it's, it's easy to do. I mean, if you wanted to do.
No, I, I heard that there was conversation either amongst staff or.
I hadn't, I hadn't.
Board members. Okay.
I, I had heard that, but I wouldn't say that would be a problem. I mean, you've got links to other sites on yours.
Yes.
Links on ours and others.
Anybody here have a problem with that?
No, I think it'll be, uh, I like.
Makes sense.
So we're okay? All right, so if you guys wanna establish a link, just contact the Borough and we'll just take care of it. All right, um, Recreation Utility. Ralph?
I'll be, I'm sure this will be brief, but we just, uh, in case you had any questions. We are proceeding. Um, John Castle and I have had discussions with the state, so, and Jack has prepared an ordinance for you, hopefully, to introduce this evening so that we can adopt by the eleventh. Um, and we, I would ask about maybe ten minutes at the most, five to ten minutes of your time in closed session, to discuss something relative to this. Um, but if there's, you know, I, I think we've looked at this for a year or so and, uh, when I hear from just about everyone, you know, this is.
So everybody should remember why it's, you know.
Shouldn't be a surprise then.
One for the utility?
Yes.
Okay. You know, redundancies and reporting and all of that and.
And fees, yeah.
It's our responsibility, one way or the other.
Yeah, so then I'd ask if, if you could introduce this ordinance that, uh, was with the package. And if, and we could introduce that this evening and, uh, with adoption on the eleventh.
I'll move.
Did you?
I'll second.
You said you had a closed session item. Is that something you wanted to discuss before the ordinance or after?
Uh.
Didn't we already come out?
No, no, I'd say after. I mean, before, this is fine. I, I think everyone's agreed to, for the utility, uh, but, so that can proceed. Yep, this is an, I need to just give you some information on, uh, a personnel issue and we'll move from there.
So in other words, the implementation, um, still has to be, you know, managed by Ralph and, you know, issues, you know, can come out. So basically, things are moving, I think we can go ahead and.
Sure. Well, what we're doing is scheduling it for, this is just the first reading. It's just.
Yeah, yeah.
So who moved?
I did.
Oh, no second?
I do.
And that's Borough Burners or Ordinance. Nancy, you could have applied a number. Um, that's the Dobbin to Borough Recreation Utility. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. A public hearing will be held. What's the next meeting, Nancy?
It's October eleventh.
Uh, October eleventh, uh, October eleventh, okay. So a public hearing will be held, um, an adoption on Octo- October the eleventh, which is a Tuesday date, two thousand and sixteen. All right. Um, eleven D, request from Safe and Sound Somerset. This is a reference to domestic violence. I don't have any comments.
They're asking for permission to display information?
Here.
Yes.
I'd assume they wanna do it in Borough Hall. That's.
That's what I took as, yes.
Right. You're gonna put it up, so they're gonna take it down.
Yes, silent witness silhouette. See silhouette represents a domestic violence victim who lost her life in the hands of a user.
Okay.
Okay?
Where are they gonna be? Where are they gonna put it?
I don't know where they're gonna put it.
Prominent locations in, in our facilities.
Inside the facility is not.
First time.
We don't have a lot of room, so it's, I mean, it was informed of.
I think this, this, this stuff in, we can put in Ralph's door.
PlayStation.
Potentially put it in the library. I mean, that gets better visibility for the community than town hall. Unless it's the week before taxes are due.
Yeah. We could probably put in a number of different, you know, locations.
But we don't get one silhouette for municipality or do they get?
No, I think it's silhouettes, what an S. So, we will see. Um, but, um, I think it's good. And, uh, we in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, all in favor?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
There's plenty of room in the, in here during your meetings. They could put them in each chair.
There you go.
One in each row.
Some meetings there aren't that many spaces.
That's true.
Okay. All right. Eleven A, we have a request from Ed English. He's gonna speak.
Absolutely.
Municipality, municipal as well.
Done.
Yes, all right. Yeah, actually, we should pay his, his total fee to fifty-five dollars and a lunching fee. He already paid for the lunching.
Tolls and stuff, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
All right, very good. Okay. Mileage is also, yeah, it's refundable. And, um, I'll prob, I'm gonna go down that day, um, support him in his presentation. Um, anyone else is invited to attend? It's during the league.
Okay, that's seventeen?
Seventeen, yep. All right, um, correspondence. Um, you don't have any? Anyone, anyone else have anything?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't give Mr. Zamera, like, kind of an answer of what we were gonna do. Um, should I talk to her, try to put something together and then put a committee together, you know, type of thing with everybody's okay?
Yeah, I want the police to be further included with it also.
I told her to meet with the chief.
I figured she could meet with the chief and then maybe us, and then we'll put something together that, you know, we can even work with the school at that point in time.
Yeah, the chief is a ready initiative, so.
Yeah, I mean, he's, he's in favor of an initiative. It's gonna work. He just wants to look in to see, you know, where the money's gonna be funded from and.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
She's asking basically for four hundred dollars, but then thinks she's gonna sell most of it, so.
Right.
What happens to the money if she sells it? Does it come back to the borough?
Well, it's something we can look into. I mean, you might be able to go onto some of these websites. They might have films and stuff that we could have for the school and put, like, together a package.
They do, I, they do.
And, you know what? We'll start doing, putting together, put together a package and then we'll meet.
And Division of Highway Traffic Safety gives pedestrian safety grants out regularly.
They give a lot out. They give a lot out.
And that's part of it, where you can purchase, um.
I know she was looking specifically for those EVIL chills.
Yes, to slow down the traffic.
There's already signs embedded that other towns, I guess they're kinda national that people are using.
I think, uh, you know, she needs to weigh in on that. I, I believe that they're trying to have the more of a community spirit as opposed to, you know, national program.
I mean, you know, you, you don't know. There might be some kind of grant money out there. You get that, get some films, get some, you know, information to get it out to the kids, so we'll find out.
That's what I'll do. I'll start looking at some grant opportunities tomorrow.
Maybe from the county.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Yeah, I think, I'll get a little plans finalized and have a mental plan, but it could now work. If they talk to the, or Ned and the police chief, then they can hopefully advise that, but in terms of providing some initial financial assistance to start, you know.
Exactly. All right, anyone else? All right, I'm number twelve. I'm second open session. Anybody have a question to be heard? Counsel?
Pretty loud back there.
Okay. Um, closed session. Um, gonna talk about collective bargaining, contract negotiations, personnel matters, pending answers, paid one of the tapes, litigation, property acquisition, attorney-client privilege. Did I forget anything?
I'll move.
Jack, anything? Okay. Um, moved by Mr. D. Porter. I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by, um, Councilman Schmidt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it.
Yeah. See, um.
Yeah.